Good evening. This is the 126th meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones, put them on vibrate. Our invocation will be led by Rabbi Moshe Hyer of the Bina Jacob Shari Zion Congregation. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Precisely two weeks from today, members of our Jewish community and of the Jewish community the world over will celebrate Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year. On the Jewish New Year, we dedicate the day to prayer. And when we're led in prayer, the One who leads us is not seen as having any special spiritual power. His power derives, as his true title implies, as the Shliach Tzibur, as the representative of the community. The One who leads in prayer, the One who recites prayer, carries with Him the concerns of the community, the wishes and the dreams of the community, and tries to represent them well, bringing them before God. And so, here today, two weeks before that day, a day when one segment of the community will be so filled with a special concern and with eyes turned towards heaven, led by their communal representative, we stand here in this chamber with our communal representatives, with all of you who dedicate your lives to not simply lead our community, but to represent our community. And I offer, together with you, the prayers that all of you, that all of us, represent our community well. That at this time, when today, our anxieties, the anxiety of our community is so raw from international terrorism, at this time when our country is so ill at ease from the tensions which divide it, and at the time when here in our precious city, we remain with the edge with the tension within our, our precious city. Psalm 127, a song of ascents of Solomon. Unless the Lord builds the house, its builder's labor in vain; unless the Lord guards the city, in vain does the guard keep watch. In vain do you rise early and go late to rest, toiling for the bread you eat; for he provides for his loved ones while they sleep. Behold, children are our portion from the Lord, our generation's his ultimate reward. Oh God, we pray to you, the true guardian of our city, that you guard, that you grow, and that you bless our precious city of Baltimore and every one of its children. We pray as we recall the first city built on this earth, as Genesis records, by none other than Adam's first son, Cain. Yes, that same Cain who had originally stood in the fields with his brother Abel, killing him while disavowing any responsibility to guard or to keep his brother. That same Cain moved on, married, had a child of his own, Inoc. And Cain built a city, and he called the name of the city as the name of his child, Inoc. Cain, as soon as he had been blessed with a child of his own, was transformed. Cain, who while out in the fields in a rural world where each farmer tends to his own lot, could afford to ignore his brother, would now, as a responsible father, become the original builder of our cities, of our communities, where no one lives for themselves, where we all understand how our lives are intertwined, how we guard and keep each other. That was how Cain would repent, would transform himself from his brother's killer to his brother's keeper. Oh God, we pray to you to guard our city, because to our great sorrow, in the millennia since Cain built the first city, as a model of the way things ought to be, of brothers working together and caring for each other, the word "city" has become too often associated with crime, with brothers hurting each other. Since Cain built that first city with the joy and spirit of a father building a new world for his children, our cities have become associated with children adrift, without father and without community to build their new world. Oh God, guard our city. Guard and guide our city council, all of those who represent our community, who work to protect and to nurture our community and its children. Help them and help us always to build and to grow a city of inspiration and of hope. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Rabbi. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Scott, Kern, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Ryser, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Henry. Mr. President, with the quorum.
Thank you. Today's showcase Baltimore presentation will be done by Francine Stokes McEvin, President of Epsilon Omega Chapter of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Young and members of the City Council. On behalf of Epsilon Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, I bring you greetings. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority was founded in 1908 by nine young female students who had a vision to create a network to support and benefit others. Today, it has grown to a membership of over 280,000 members, representing 993 chapters in 42 states. The District of Columbia, the U.S. Virgin Islands, the Bahamas, Germany, the U.S. Virgin Islands, Liberia, South Korea, Japan, Canada, South Africa, and the Middle East. The Alpha Kappa Alpha program reflects our conscious embodiment in our credo to be supreme in service to all mankind. The focus of our international program launching new dimensions of service addresses educational enrichment, health promotion, family strengthening, environmental ownership, and global impact. Just a few of Epsilon Omega's programs include a mentoring program to support the young scholars of the Blue for Drew Gemma Sea Academy. A very successful health fair was held this past Saturday, which provided dental and vision care and screening, as well as other health services to the community. A back-to-school fair was held in August, which resulted in the distribution of over 700 backpacks for students from preschool to high school. And we want to thank certainly Councilwoman Middleton for coming out and being a part of this initiative. These are just a few of our many programs, which are designed to enrich the lives of others through service to all mankind. Most importantly, we are very proud to say that this year in December, we will celebrate our 95th anniversary, as we continue a legacy of service. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton, but before she do, I want to recognize Senator Delores Kelly from the 10th District in Baltimore County. Welcome. Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have floor privileges to, so that Senator Delores Kelly can come to our floor.
Second by Council Vice President Ryser. Second by Council Vice President Ryser. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to the guests of Councilwoman Middleton, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries.
And also have Eve Francine Stokes McKelvin, the President of Epsilon Omega. And Senator Delores Kelly is also Chairman of the Connection Committee. I have a resolution. And the City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc., Epsilon Omega Chapter, in recognition of your 95th anniversary in service to the Baltimore community. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on this 19th day of September 2016, signed by President Bernard C. Jack Young, and Sharon Green Middleton, and all members of the council. And I just want to thank you. This sorority has a wonderful community center in the Doe Field community. They have been there for some time. The several communities use the center for community meetings. They have had wonderful events. They're known for their Eating Together program. I just want to thank you so much for the wonderful things that you do in the 6th District and throughout this entire city. Very appreciative.
Thank you. It is the Council's custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Spector.
We're on the same page, Mr. President. I request that we generalize Rabbi Howar's.
Second by Councilwoman Holton. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of Proceedings from the September 12 City Council Meeting is on the council members' desks.
There's a motion, motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Journal is adopted. Bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 16-0755, Supplementary State Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Public Works, $1,457,640. Ordinance for the purpose of providing a supplementary state fund operating appropriation in the amount of $1,457,640 to Department of Public Works, Service 730, to provide funding for two combined heat and power systems for the Patapsco wastewater treatment plant and the Back River wastewater treatment plant, as well to provide funding for energy-efficient upgrades at the following properties: Brooklyn Branch Library, Callow Hill Aquatic Center, Carol F. Cook Recreation Center, City of Baltimore Health Clinic, Clifton Library, Druid Hill Family Center, Dunbar Day Care Center, Edgewood Day Care Center, Herring Run Library, Northwood Library, Patterson Park Library, Rice Town Road Library, Roosevelt Recreation Center, Sarah's Hope Homeless Shelter, Southeast Anchor Library, Waxster Senior Center, and the West Side Youth Opportunity Center, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0756, Retirement Savings Plan, Definition of Employee, Composition of Board Trustees, Forfeitures. Ordinance for the purpose of clarifying the definition of employee, changing the composition of the Board of Trustees, providing for the election of the Board Chair, clarifying the provisions that require Board of Estimates approval for the retention of services, revising the rules governing the forfeitures of certain accounts, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related language, and generally relating to the administration and operation of the Retirement Savings Plan of the City of Baltimore. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0757, Plant New Development Designation Northwood Commons. Ordinance for the purpose of repealing the existing development plan for the Lock Raven Boulevard and Argon Drive Plant New Development, and approving a new development plan for the property to be known as the Northwood Commons Plant New Development. Sponsored Curry, Kern, and Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few weeks ago, I introduced the repeal of the PUD for the Northwood Commons development, and the hope was that the transformed Baltimore would be the overriding document to govern the development there. The communities in the last week or two wanted to have a replacement PUD put in there. And working with the developers and their legal staff, there is time to do a replacement PUD. I spoke to the Chairman of the Land Use, and we're going to suspend the rules and have the hearing announced. Planning is going to have a, the commission is going to have a review of this before the second reader. We're up some time restraints because of posting requirements, and with the help of Nancy Ray from Let's Stay a Reference, we're working to get that done this evening, which will meet all the legal requirements for the introduction of the PUD. And then there will be another sign that will be needed to, for time for the hearing to come up, which the Vice President will announce. So I'm working with the communities up there. The PUD that's going to be replaced will reflect the memorandum of understanding that the communities are signing off on, and we'd like to get this done. The Morgan State University has already built a school of business there, if you know where Northwood Shopping Center is. They're about 50% complete with the School of Behavioral Health, which is the building next to it. The ideal thing would be the shopping center would have been torn down by this time and start to be rebuilt, but it didn't happen because, not because this councilman, but other factors. So, Mr. President, with the help of your office, this hopefully will get done this term.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0758, Health Hydraulic Fracturing Ban. Ordinance for the purpose of prohibiting hydraulic fracturing in Baltimore City, setting certain penalties, and generally relating to the regulation of hydraulic fracturing and its byproducts. Sponsored Kern, Stokes, Holton, Henry, Middleton, Clark, Spector.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. At first glance, folks will say, "Well, we're not going to fracking Baltimore City because we don't have the resources under areas in Baltimore City." And I'm not going to go over all the concerns about the risk of fracking, the climate change, the health impacts of fracking at this time of what's a committee hearing. But the bottom line of this councilman and other environmentalists is that if Baltimore joins Prince George's and Montgomery, and maybe some other counties that will be coming aboard to oppose fracking in their subdivisions, once the critical mass in the state opposes it, then the legislature will take it up and maybe do it statewide. Now, obviously, some of the folks might know what's happening in Oklahoma with the tremors because of issues with fracking out there. No one can, I don't believe, can ascertain that it's caused because of the fracking, but there is going to be evidence presented at the committee hearing that that may be the case. So I'm hopefully that with Baltimore joining, the other major counties, Prince George's and Montgomery, and other counties to come, the critical mass will be there, Mr. President, to have the statewide ban done by the legislature.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0759, Zoning Condition to Use Secondhand Store, 4418 Ebenson Avenue. Ordinance for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a secondhand store on the property known as 4418 Ebenson Avenue is outlined on Reddy and Company Platt. Sponsored Holton.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill is to allow a vacancy in a shopping center in the district, a large vacancy, to no longer be vacant. They have found a tenant that is in agreement with the community, and we just want to move this forward as quickly as we can. Thank you.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0760, Tobacco Products and Smoking Devices, Increased Penalties, New Prohibition. Ordinance for the purpose of increasing the penalties for violation of certain laws governing tobacco products and smoking devices, prohibiting the distribution of tobacco products and smoking devices near schools, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, and generally relating to the use of tobacco products and smoking devices. Sponsored Holton, Kern, Costello, Clark, Scott, Spector.
Please note that Councilwoman Middleton, Councilman Henry, and Council Vice President Ryser, Councilman Welch as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tobacco in Baltimore, that many people don't know, is a major contributor to deaths in Baltimore City. This is an effort, and as the state seeks to get federal funds to support the treatment reduction of tobacco use, Baltimore City is near the top of the list of violators of tobacco regulations. And so we're seeking to strengthen our end as to help stop the state having to pay millions of dollars to receive money from the federal government by increasing the fines and sending a strong message to those who violate the laws having to do with the distribution of tobacco and fruit flavored tobacco products in Baltimore City. I thank my co-sponsors for signing on to this very important measure that ultimately is put in place to safeguard our youth, which are our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Kern. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the sponsor for bringing this to us. I know that she's concerned about health issues and specifically tobacco-related issues. I hope we can get this done with this term before we go out, because I think we have more tobacco-related folks to try to make this happen during this term. And I am completely in favor of this. As you know, Mr. President, and council members over the years, I've taken the lead on certain issues concerning tobacco, and I want to thank the sponsor for presenting this to us.
City Council Bill 16-0761, Police Ordinances, Replica Gun Ban. Ordinance for the purpose of prohibiting the possession of replica guns in Baltimore City, defining a certain term, making replica guns subject to seizure and forfeiture, establishing the procedures for seizing and forfeiting replica guns, imposing certain penalties, and generally relating to replica guns. Sponsored Kraft, President Young, Middleton, Kern, Scott, Holton, Henry, Clark, Costello.
Please note, Council Vice President Ryser is co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I would like to thank the administration. I'd like to thank Drew Vedder from the Baltimore Police Department and the Baltimore Police Department for the work that they have been doing with me on this important legislation. As you know, and as all of us know, we had an incident here in Baltimore some time ago where a young man was shot because he had a replica gun that police officers did not have the opportunity or the chance to determine whether it was a real gun or a replica gun. And we had a tragedy in another part of the country just recently with the same sort of incident where someone had a replica gun, and unfortunately, they were killed as a result of having a replica gun. You know, the easiest way to resolve this is to get the replica guns off the street. Nobody's saying that we can't have toy guns. I mean, everybody wants to have a super soaker. You know, that's not a problem, you know? And everybody wants to have other types of toy guns. We all played Cowboys and Indians, or whatever it was at one point in our lives, but you know, this deals very specifically with very specific guns. It's any toy, imitation, facsimile, or replica pistol, revolver, shotgun, rifle, air rifle, BB gun, pellet gun, machine gun, or other simulated weapon, which because of its color, size, shape, or other characteristics can reasonably be perceived to be a real firearm. No one should possess one of these replica guns, whether they be five years old, 15 years old, or 50 years old, because the only thing they're doing is putting themselves and the police officer and anyone around them in jeopardy. Now, one thing we did do, Mr. President, very, because we were concerned that, you know, some parent may negligently buy one of these for their children, and fortunately, an officer may be able to take it from them, we didn't make this a crime straight out of the box because we don't want to have somebody get a record on that. The first offense is a civil offense. The second offense is a civil offense. The third offense is a misdemeanor. And so, we go after on the third time, but the replica gun gets seized under any, and it's forfeited under any. So I think this is a step forward. I think that it will bring more safety to our streets, both for those who live in our neighborhoods, those who play in our neighborhoods, and those who have to protect us in our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. President.
Please note that Councilman Mosby, Councilwoman Spector, as co-sponsors. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. There are no resolutions to be introduced. You can find the consent counter, section A at the back of the agenda is their motion to approve this consent counter. Motion by Councilman Kern, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of approving the consent counter, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. This counter is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Mosby. You head.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I stand today asking for us to go away with the City Council rules and provide floor privileges to my guests.
Second by Councilwoman Spector. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to Councilman Mosby's guests, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Your guests, may take the floor.
I digard with me, and Councilman Kern says I already have extended floor privileges. So there's a lot of work that takes place in the city of Baltimore on a daily basis. And the one thing that I think the city of Baltimore does an amazing job of is we have these amazing festivals in different communities and in downtown. And a lot of work goes into setting those events up, as well as breaking those events down. So everything's there, ready, prepared for us to have fun, and then when it's time for us having all our fun, we get to leave, and there's folks that are doing the hard work to ensure that the city's back in order. We do three to four events in my district every single year that are pretty large events. Our last event, we did a back-to-school rally where we gave over 320 backpacks out to kids in West Baltimore. And again, the event turned out great. We had an amazing amount of volunteers, but it was these hard-working men and women that are standing behind me that actually did that. So my fifth year on the council and doing this every single year, and to this amazing leader, and your amazing team, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, and I know the other colleagues on the floor also represent that as well, thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, I don't think sometimes we do enough, or call out enough, or provide enough recognition for the folks who boots are actually on the ground, doing the actual hard work, and I would just like to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. So we have City Council. So the City Council Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to, in recognition of your outstanding dedication and commitment to the citizens of the city of Baltimore, and your willingness to help make the summer of 2016 Black Parties a success, this entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion, and directs this resolution be presented this day, 19th September 2016, signed by our President Bernard C. Jack Young, and myself, Nick J. Mosby. Thank you. Mr. President, can you come down for a picture? And if colleagues, if you would like to gather around in a photo as well, I would love for you to join us. Mr. President, if I may, just call out the supervisor, Marlon Walton. He's always responsive, always there. And again, we'd just like to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. I wanted to make sure I said his name.
Yeah, thank you all for a great job. Okay, Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to move short titles for second and third reader.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of short titles for the remainder of the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries. Second reader, Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0711, City Property Naming the Skate Park in Roosevelt Park to be the Skate Park of Baltimore at Roosevelt Park.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a hearing on this bill last Tuesday, September 13th. Mr. President, I think that we're all familiar with the Roosevelt Park, and I think we're all familiar with Miss Stephanie Murdock, the champion of skateboarding and skate parks here in the city of Baltimore. We want to just congratulate Stephanie once again for all of her hard work on this. And there is one amendment on the members' desk. I would move the amendment.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The bill is amended. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
And we would move the bill favorably as amended. And we would move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 16-0714, Resoning 5501 Plaski Highway.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ryan Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts on this bill.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Vice President Ryan Singer.
Mr. President, there's amendments to this bill. The amendment's on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. The bill is amended. Chair recognizes Vice President Ryan Singer.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 16-0715, Resoning 5501 Bel Air Road.
Chair recognizes Vice President Ryan Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ryan Singer.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader to be held one meeting.
City Council Bill 16-0637, Resoning 3,000 through 3052 West North Avenue. City Council Bill 16-0690, Resoning 3020 Garrison Boulevard, 3013, 3015, 3017, 3019, and 3021 Chelsea Terrace, and 3805, 3807, and 3809 Bonner Road. City Council Bill 16-0716, Plan Unit Development Designation, Rolling Park Place. City Council Bill 16-0719, Plan Unit Development, Amending Ordinance 16-487.
Third reader for final passes.
City Council Bill 16-0669, Port Covington Development District. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Ryan, Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Henry abstaining. Clark abstaining. Branches are no. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0670, Port Covington Bond Issuance. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Ryan, Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
Abstaining. Please note that Councilman Henry abstaining. Branches are no. Clark abstains. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0671, Port Covington Special Taxing District. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Ryan, Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Henry abstaining. Councilman Branch, no. And Councilwoman Clark is a no. This bill is approved. I mean abstain. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0691, RPP Area 41 Plan Amendment. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Ryan, Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 16-0723, Minority and Women's Business Enterprises, Small Local Business Enterprise Procurement Preferences.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. After the hearing we had on this bill, there were a number of amendments proposed by the Department of Finance. At that time, right immediately following that hearing, representatives from the Finance Department, the Minority Women Business Opportunity Office, the Minority Women Business Development Office got together and went through all of their proposed amendments against the bill, and looking at them came to consensus of amendments that would enhance the viability of the bill going forward, living up to its intent. And those amendments are on the members' desk. It took us a little while longer than we thought to vet all of the amendments proposed, and they are now on members' desks for a vote. Mr. President, I move these floor amendments, which are being distributed to the council members.
Second by Councilwoman Spector. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. This bill is amended and will be held over until our next meeting.
City Council Bill 16-0727, Charles Village Community Benefits District, Supplemental Tax Exclusion from High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Tax Credit. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Walsh, Ryan, Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements, starting with the side, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development has a number of bills to be heard. Bill Number 16-312R is approving a submission of an application to the state of Maryland for the creation of a West Baltimore City Focus Area that will be at 9:00 a.m. Thursday, September 29th here in chambers. Bill Number 16-0700, which is Payment in lieu of Taxes, Ward 07, Section 04, Block 1, 567, Lot 51A, and Ward 07, Section 03, Block 1, 586, Lot 2, Eager Square. We will hear that bill at 9:10 a.m. Thursday, September 29th here in chambers. Bill Number 13-0242, Arts and Entertainment District, Property Tax Credits, Admissions and Abuse Tax Exemptions. We will hear that bill at 9:20 a.m. Thursday, September 29th here in chambers. Bill Number 16-0722, Sale of Property Former Available Portion of a 12-Foot Alley. We will hear that bill at 9:30 a.m. Thursday, September 29th here in chambers. And Resolution 16-307R, which is Informational Hearing on Water Affillability. We will hear that bill at 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 26th here in chambers. And finally, Mr. President, we will have a legislative oversight hearing on an update from Finance and from the Controller's Office on the current status of the city audits. As you know, the first round, not the first round, but all of the audits are supposed to be completed by December. And so, we will host a televised hearing on Wednesday, November 2nd here in chambers at 5:00 p.m. on the status of the city audits. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend rules 10-2, 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Welch. All those in favor of suspended rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilwoman.
The Budget Appropriations Committee will hear City Council Bill 16-0755 on Tuesday, October 11th, here in council chambers at 3:00 p.m. Supplementary State Fund Operating Appropriation Department of Public Works, $1,457,640.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ryan Singer.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a voting session on Bill 16-0653 on Wednesday, September 21st at 1:40 p.m. in the council chambers. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0695 on Wednesday, October 5th at 1:45 p.m. in the council chambers. This is the Plan Unit Development Amendment 1 for New Charlo Baptist Church. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0696, Wednesday, October 5th at 2:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a Plan Unit Development Amendment 1 at the Kennedy-Kreger Institute. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0707, Wednesday, October 5th at 2:15 p.m. This is the rezoning at 1410 North Monroe Street. Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0733 on Thursday, October 13th at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is to repeal Ordinance 77-501 at Lock Raven Boulevard and Argon Drive. It's a Plan Unit Development. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0730, Thursday, October 13th at 1:15 p.m. in the council chambers. This is zoning conditional use. This is amending Ordinance 01-236. Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0732, Thursday, October 13th, 1:30 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a rezoning at 325 West Baltimore Street. Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0751, Thursday, October 13th at 1:45 p.m. in the council chambers. This is rezoning at 300 South Patterson Park Avenue. Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0753, Thursday, October 13th at 2:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is rezoning 1717, 1719, 1720, 1721, 1722, 1723, 1724, and 1726 Manor Avenue, also 1710, 1714, and 1716 Dundalk Avenue. Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0729, Thursday, October 13th at 2:15 p.m. in the council chambers. This is the rezoning at 4200 and 4400 O'Donnell Street, 901 and 910 South Creston Street, and 4301, 4315, and 4401 Eastern Avenue. Mr. President, I suspend the rules for 10-2 and 10-3.
Second by Councilman Welch. All those in favor of suspended rules, to announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilman Ryan Singer.
Mr. President, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0752, Wednesday, October 19th at 1:30 p.m. in the council chambers. This is the rezoning of 900 Fleet Street. Committee will hold a hearing on 16-0709, Wednesday, October 19th at 1:45 p.m. This is the Plan Unit Development Amendment to Port Covington. Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0749, Wednesday, October 19th at 2:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is the Plan Unit Development Amendment 1 at Hollerbird Manor Condom Ineams. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 6... Oh, Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2.
Second by Councilwoman Sharon Gray. Middleton, all those in favor of suspended rules, to announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ryan Singer.
Mr. President, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0757, Wednesday, October 19th at 2:15 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a Plan Unit Development Amendment 1 at Northwood Commons. The committee will hold a hearing on 16-0750, Wednesday, October 19th at 2:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a Plan Unit Development Amendment at Mount Washington Mill. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 16-0759, Wednesday, November 2nd at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning conditional use second-hand store at 4418 Evanson Avenue. The last, Mr. President, is that the Land Use and Transportation Committee will have a work session, hearing on transformed Baltimore zoning on Wednesday, October 5th at 5:00 p.m., and this will be televised. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announces, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 160693 on October 13th at 3:10 p.m. here in council chambers, and it's an ordinance concerning the repeal of the Port Covington Urban Renewal Area Plan, the purpose of repealing Ordinance 18-1075 as amended by ordinances 871179 and 88-1, which established the Port Covington Urban Renewal Area and Plan and providing for a special effective date. Also, the Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 16-0731, October 13th to 3:15 p.m. here in council chambers, and it's an ordinance concerning the Urban Renewal Market Center Amendment. The Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 160725 on October 13th at 3:20 p.m. here in council chambers, an ordinance concerning the Urban Renewal Carroll Camden Amendment. So, those are three added bills to the October 13th hearing date. Also, Urban Affairs and Aging will hear City Council Bill 150509 on October 27th at 3:10 p.m. here in council chambers, and it's an ordinance concerning the Baltimore City Landmark List, the Eastern Avenue Pumping Station. Also, the Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 150510 on October 27th at 3:15 p.m. here in council chambers, and it's an ordinance concerning the Baltimore City Landmark List, the John Ruha Elementary Middle School. And lastly, the Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 150511 on October 27th at 3:20 p.m. here in council chambers, an ordinance concerning the Baltimore City Landmark List, Patterson Park.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Vice President Ryan Singer. We have to go back.
Mr. President, it's gaining my attention, need to suspend rules 10-2.
Second by Councilwoman Holton. All those in favor of suspended rules, to announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Vice President Ryan Singer.
And this is Bill 16-0750, which is being held Wednesday, October 19th, 2:30 p.m. in the council chambers. This is the Plan Unit Development Amendment at Mount Washington Mill.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health Committee will meet on Monday, November 7, 2016, in De Bruyn's chambers to have a televised hearing for City Council Order 16-0316R, which is the street investigative hearing for street harassment for the purpose of raising awareness about gender-based street harassment, assisting efforts to find ways to stop the intimidation that occurs through street harassment, and to raise awareness that street harassment is tied and strengthened with institutional sexism and the culture of gender-based violence. Now, this is the night before election, the Tuesday, the next day, the Tuesday, will be the presidential general election, so we're going to hear this, though, that Monday night at 5:00 on TV 25.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 160728, Discounted City Services and Equipment for Nonprofit Events, on Tuesday, October 25, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. Move to suspend the appropriate rules to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspended rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 160761, Police Ordinances: Replica Gun Ban, on Tuesday, October 25, 2016, at 10:15 a.m. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Resolution 160303R, Request for Federal Action, Federal Railroad Administration Crucise Rule, on Tuesday, November 1, 2016, at 10:06 a.m. here in the council chambers. Move to suspend the rules to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Curran. All those in favor of suspended rules, to announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilman Curran. I mean, Councilman Kraft.
The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 160758, Health Hydraulic Fracturing Ban, on Tuesday, November 1, 2016, at 10:11 a.m. here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Chair recognizes, regular announcement. First, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Z. Cohen. He's the councilman-elect for the first district, and he's here today. And Ricky Spector will speak to it as well, but Gene Rayner, who was a former election board administrator, suddenly passed away, as did Dr. Earl Gillyard, the pastor of Greater Harvest Baptist Church, and a good friend of mine. His name was Punchy Pollitt. What's Punchy's first name? David, passed away. His funeral was today. So, I wanted to... Punchy's first name? David, passed away. His funeral was today. So I want a moment of silence for those three, and I know Ricky want to speak to Jean Rayner. Chair, recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, I rise to unfortunately inform us that since we last met last Monday, the city of Baltimore has seen seven people die by way of homicide, leaving us with a total of 222 for this year, and I would like to ask, not given all the names, but ask the council vice president to give a moment of silence for those that we've lost this last week as well. Thank you.
Chair, recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow will be September 20th, and on September 20th, 2008, former city councilman Kenneth C. Harris Sr. was shot and killed at the Northwood Shopping Center. I'm going to ask the vice president to have us do a moment of silence in his memory, and I thought it was appropriate that we are tonight continuing in the rejuvenation of that center, an effort that I know its representatives and the surrounding neighbors and the property owners have been committed to since that tragic occurrence. Also, I'm just going to speak very quickly to Jean Rayner's passing before we get to Councilwoman Specter. I did not, I had not heard of that until just now. Jean was my first boss. My, the summer between high school and in college, I worked at the Board of Elections, and he was my dad's boss when my dad was not that much older as well. Jean was responsible for teaching two generations of Henrys how this place works in a lot of ways, and we will not see his like again. Thank you.
Chair, recognize Councilman Mosby, then you, Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll ask colleagues, as well as folks attending this meeting, downstairs in the rotunda right now as I speak, is the Liquor Store Stories reception. The Liquor Store Stories is a photo voice exhibition created by middle and high school students in Baltimore alongside with MICA students. Together, they've created the series as a means for the students to express their feelings about the over-density of alcohol establishments in their communities. Tonight, the youth that have created the series are in the rotunda showing off their work and explaining how they feel about this issue. The event will take place from now until 7:00 o'clock, so again, please stop by and listen to what our children have to say. Thank you.
All righty. Chair, recognize Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you beat me to the punch on Zeke Cohen. I was going to give him a happy birthday shout-out, but you got him for me. And just one other thing on Jean, because I know Ricky will speak best on him, but, you know, he was a longtime resident of the 1st district, and he was a longtime, you know, political activist, for the lack of a better word. But, you know, we will not see his like again. I mean, in many, many ways, but we truly are seeing the passing of an era when we lose Jean, because there are very few people left who practice politics in the way that Jean did, in the eras that Jean did, and, you know, it is, it's something that we will long remember and will long remember. So I'll leave the rest to Ricky. Finally, Mr. President, I would, I would invite everyone, when this coming Saturday, September 24th, I will be having my 14th and final annual picnic at Captain James. All the, all you can eat, all you can drink, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., it's all free. So if you go to the book fair, go to the book fair, buy some books, listen to somebody, and then come over to Captain James, and bring yourself, bring your kids, all you got to do is let us know you're coming, okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to take a moment to stand up and just show this. We received 300 of these backpacks, and we distributed, thanks to the generosity of the National Foundation of Women Legislators and Office Depot, and each backpack had a pencil case with a pencil, pen, crayons, eraser, and we distributed them to, we received 300 of them, that were hand-carried to schools in the 8th district, and the principals were very excited to receive them. This is just one of the designs, and this is the second year in a row that they have done that and made it available to schools in the city. So for as much as people think others don't stop and recognize how we can all contribute to our children, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the National Foundation of Women Legislators and Office Depot for stepping up to help us meet the needs of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, recognize Council Vice President Ross Singer. Oh, Ricky. I didn't see you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. To add to all of the outstanding contributions that Jean Rayner did make, I didn't know he helped create the kind of representatives that we have in this council, but I do know that if there was a picture of political operative in the dictionary, it would be a picture of Jean Rayner. He was, he was unusual, and he was, he was a wonderful friend, but if he wasn't your friend, watch out, watch out. And I do hope that his memory will be a blessing. He served Baltimore City as the supervisor of elections and the state as the supervisor of elections, and I ask our vice president for a moment of silence in his memory.
Chair, recognize Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, October 24th, at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Mr. President, I ask for a moment of silence for our former councilwoman Kenneth Harris Sr., Pastor Earl Gillyard, Jean Rayner, David Pollard, and the 222 homicide victims that were killed in Baltimore City.
Thank you. There being the fairness, this concludes the 126th meeting of the sudden first term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.